I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen's Meeting of June 6, 2023 at 7:06 PM. All stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have any announcements this evening. Does any of the other members have any announcements they would like to offer?
Well, why not? The Douglas High School baseball team is playing in, I believe, the Round of 16 baseball, MIAA baseball tournament. Come support the boys, Thursday, 3:30.
Excellent. Okay. Anybody here for anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing as none. First item that we have up is we have an application for the Conservation Committee. You'll see in your packet there's an application from Mr. James Farn for the appointment of Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission, on May 22, 2023, voted to recommend Mr. Farn for a three-year term. Step up.
Please.
Hi.
Thank you for volunteering. We're always anxiously trying to find people. What strikes your interest to be on the Conservation?
So my wife and I and our two kids, we've been here for five years. And I had to work with the planning board to get some stuff rectified and everything. So it just kind of piqued my interest and stuff. And I'd like to get back to the community, too, so.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Farn?
Where were you prior to?
Grafton.
Grafton?
Mm-hmm.
What brought you to Douglas?
So my wife's brother was selling his house. So he just sold it directly to us, so.
I see the position for alternate or associate member. Is that correct?
I think that was supposed to be the planning board.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No, what do you do for a living?
I'm in finance.
Oh, nice.
See that the existing committee members support his appointment. So with that, I would make a motion that we appoint Mr. Farn?
Yes.
Mr. Farn for a three-year term, beginning now, I suppose.
Yeah, July 1st. A motion made by Tim Bonin. Anybody care to second that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Maxwell Posmer. Any more discussion on this? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Nobody left. Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you for stepping up.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
So, Mr. Chairman, I believe that means there are now seven. Is that four?
Yes.
Okay, the next thing in our packet is a discussion about a letter of support in the ADA coverage for the 2023 Open Space and Recreation Plan. Are you here from Open Space, sir? Could you come up, please? Could you give us an overview of what you're looking for?
We would like a letter that says that Ken Frazier is the ADA Coordinator for the town of Douglas. And that would go to Melissa Cryan at the Conservation Services in Boston, just to confirm it. There's two other letters that are also needed, but that's not your concern.
So you're looking to get a letter that states Ken Frazier is the ADA officer for the town? Okay.
That's all.
What else does that do? I'm just curious as to what the purpose of it is.
There's, you know, so many things that are, to make the plan legitimate and accepted by the state, there's a lineup of different things that we have to do. And that's just one of them, to declare that we do, in fact, have an ADA coordinator. He doesn't have a committee, but he needs one.
Does it open the door for any other things that would come back to the town for obligations? And what I'm getting at is like with green communities, then you have to, the town would have to adopt the Stretch Energy Code, complete streets. You would have to have a bike path and stuff. So I didn't know if there was any repercussions.
It's just saying we do have an ADA coordinator. You know, it doesn't have any ramifications in any direction, I don't think.
Anybody else have any questions?
He is the one in charge of that.
Yeah, he is the, he's been appointed that position. Yes, Lisa?
Did you need a letter of support, though, from the Board of Selectmen? I thought you said, oh, you didn't mention that right now. So that's why I was wondering.
Oh, I didn't have, and I supplied, I guess I haven't supplied that. Yeah. So, yeah, I can give you the information on who you just sent it to? Or you pretty much know?
I thought you needed them to give you a letter of support for the plan itself. I thought that's what the email read.
I thought it was more that they just, they have to send to the state a letter that says that Ken is...
Only the ADA.
Is the ADA coordinator.
Okay, all right.
To Melissa Cryan.
Yep. I just wanted to clarify that on my end.
Is this time-sensitive for you?
Not immediately. You know, it's, I'm sure we're going to get the plan back with some more updates to do and things like that, so. And we're going to have to send a letter that says that basically certain things that they also want from the ADA, we don't have because there is no committee. So just have to come forward and tell them that's, and if that's a problem, please let us know. We'll take it from there.
Speaking about the committee, Mr. Administrator, the, we restricted that to somebody that would be challenged in some ways to be on that committee? Or is it open to anybody to be on it?
I don't know that we restricted it. I think the state statute that creates the commission does require representation from the community, the community.
But 100% of the committee have to be, or just?
I don't think so.
No?
I believe it can be family members as well.
Yeah, just so we can get some clarification and put it out there, because I think people might be misunderstanding. And that may be why we're not getting people to get on there.
So it's a vehicle for the acceptance of complaints and the review of complaints. You know, Ken ends up being the jack-of-all-trades and having to put on all those hats, but he is the ADA coordinator for the town.
Yes.
And so he would have a similar role that he has with zoning, where he's the enforcement officer. He would be making preliminary rulings on what he sees, and then the commission would act accordingly. So this is more or less a ministerial task. If all I'm doing is certifying that he was appointed and they say...
Mm-hmm, that's it.
Then what else?
You could do that anyways.
Right. Yeah, and I'm going to get him. I've got a letter together for him because he's so busy to, about, you know, the situation that there isn't a committee and to contact him if it's a problem to hold up the plan acceptance.
It's not that we haven't tried. I think we reached out.
Yeah, how did that?
Informally, we tried not to be overly ostentatious about it, but I believe we reached out to parents and through the school system or the network, the social network through the schools. Because where a lot of people are identified and have needs. We just haven't gotten a lot of interest in the committee. So, can you try again?
The plan has a lot, you know, and it would be good to have that committee because the plan has a lot of things geared toward, you know, the bathroom at the ball field, you know, with handles that you can turn and things like that. So you have access to, not necessarily trails, but...
Yeah.
My father got up to the top of Mount Washington, although.
Anybody else have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Opens it up, that opens it up. A little confused at first, but that's understandable now.
Thank you. Next thing we have is grant acceptance for water, sewer department lead line service grant, water assessment management grant, and the sewer assessment management grant. So the lead service line, that grant is for $200,000. That actually was awarded in December 2022. The water assessment management plan was for $84,000. That was awarded in May 2023. And the sewer asset management plan was for $75,900. And that was awarded on September 2022. So we'll be looking for a motion to accept those grants.
Motion to accept.
Accept the grant.
Accept the grant.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Maxwell and seconded by Russ. All, any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good, Tim?
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah. The next thing that we have to, that we have is the review of the annual appointments. This has to be done by the next meeting at the latest because it has to be done before July 1st. You're still waiting for a few responses?
Yes, I think. They're trickling in.
Refresh my memory on your color codes? Thank you.
Yellow is up for reappointment. Highlighted, green member responded yes to be reappointed if the board approves. And blue is moderator appointment.
So nobody's opposed. We'll hold that until the next meeting. And we'll have to make a decision on the appointments.
Well, the one that caught my eye initially is the Central Mass Regional Planning Rep. I was appointed to that.
Is this, is that our next one?
That might be.
Number five?
Yeah, they also want this, too.
Yeah.
Do we need to hold Kevin's?
For that particular one? No, I would just be, I'm...
There's two spots with a delegate in the office.
There is.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the... Well, that we relied more on the planning board.
There is one rep for the planning board. That's Megan Washington at this point. They just voted in their last meeting.
So is that the same thing that number five is, Tim?
I think so.
Yeah. So that brings us to number five. The Select Board CMRPC Delegate Alternate Appointment for 2024. Do you have any interest in continuing that role, Tim?
I might have to admit, I was appointed to that position because of an absence at a Select Board meeting where my colleagues at the time, who I loved dearly, appointed me to it. The job itself, I think we highly rely heavily on staff. But yeah, if someone else maybe knew her to the board and liked to get involved in the CMRPC, I wouldn't be opposed to it.
Anybody have any interest in that?
Yeah, I'll nominate myself, too.
Okay. Anybody else? So I would look, so Maxwell nominated himself. So do I have a second on that?
You sure do.
Which position?
The delegate.
The delegate, yeah. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I have no idea what that entails, excuse me?
I'm sorry.
No. I have no idea what that entails. If you reach out to Tim or maybe somebody on the planning board. I have no idea. I haven't volunteered for it.
All right, well, I'll talk to you, Tim. You can fill me in on what it is.
The CMRPC is the Regional Planning Commission. It's not as powerful as the Cape Cod Commission, which is sort of like, you know, has to sign on everything. But it is still a significant presence. And we apply for major grants.
Yeah.
There's typically a CMRPC approval step that we have to get through for major grants. There are any number of meetings during the year about transportation planning and other major planning initiatives for various cities and towns in Worcester County. They're usually held in Worcester. And it's not very heavy lifting, maybe once or twice a year, tops. On your previous agenda item, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if you will indulge me.
On the appointments?
Yeah.
Yes.
One of your annual appointments is town council. And you don't have to do it tonight, but it has to be done before the change of the fiscal year to appoint the town's legal representation. You just have to make sure we anticipate these details. These various law firms represent us in court. They need to have a ballot.
Yeah.
Pass over it again.
My desire is to do all our appointments at the next meeting so we don't carry them off because if we hiccup on a, we could lose volunteers. Okay, number six, we have review minutes. The only minutes that we're going to review is the May 16 meeting minutes because Tim and I are the only ones that attended. The other ones that are in attendance tonight. So we don't have a quorum in order to vote for them. So if you look at your May 16 minutes and see if there's anything in there that disagree with, that you want changed, if not, then we can vote to accept them as written. I don't have any questions. If everybody's good with it, I'll look for a motion to accept the minutes as written.
All motion to accept the minutes as written?
Motion's been made by Maxwell. I need a second.
I'd amend that to include the date of May 16.
We have an amendment to accept the meeting minutes of May 16, 2023, as written.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, seeing as none. Next item is the Scannell Property Development Agreement. The town administrator, hopefully, can give us an overview.
Yeah, I notice this is Bob's lock right. He'll come in just as I'm finishing, and then he'll want to speak. And it is up to the chair to decide what to do with that.
No, I'll stop.
He may be coming in hot, but I, he's not here now. And this is where we are in the meeting. General point, the development agreement lays out the terms and conditions of our relationship with a major developer. There's typically give and take on both sides in order to make the project run smoothly. We agree on everything from when the services are going to be turned on, when they're going to be turned off, where they're going to be located, and how they're going to be financed. The town of Douglas, to this point, has not used tax increment financing or other forms of economic development financing to do this work. We have done utility work based upon grant funds and contributions by the private developers. In exchange for those private contributions for these utility connections, the developers look for certain assurances. So they are memorialized in this agreement, as are their contributions to the overall effort. Bob's not here to answer the question. It is not my, is not my impression that there is a rush to do this. So, Mr. Chairman, my inclination is to go over the agreement, answer any questions I can, and then post it for June 20th for a final vote, give the board opportunity to absorb what's here and to ask questions should you want to. The operative part of the agreement is really pages two, three, and four. The town makes certain promises as to the size and installation date of the various forms of infrastructure. We make a promise under Section 3, Subsection B. The maximum daily volume of water supplied by the town to the developer is 7,500 gallons per day. I should back up. This agreement is with respect to the warehouse. That is on the other side of 146. So only about 7% of this building is in Douglas. The majority is in Oxbridge and Sutton. This has been referred to as the Blackstone Valley Logistics Center. And Scannell was the developer. So this is not the big one in Douglas. This is the one on the other side of the highway. We're going to bring them 7,500 gallons a day. We'll have a four-inch sewer force main that will connect to a new sewer pump station that will be completed this summer. So the work that most residents see going on right now at the location of the bridge is related to the bridge and finalizing that installation. But shortly after that is completed, you'll see people digging in the ground to build a vault, which will be a brand-new, modern pump station for a sewer. The primary beneficiary of that will be Scannell. There's recitations here in Sections 4A and B over who owns what. There are terms and conditions set around any outages that we have to do for maintenance. Clearly, a large warehouse wants advance notice if we are going to turn off their water or sewer to perform maintenance. So that was agreed to. Sections 5, 6, and 7 deal with the financial arrangements in association with our grant applications and what the developer is actually pledging now. So when we apply for these big grants, we identify the matching funds that will support the overall project. So we may not necessarily be able to raise all the money that we need to do the project from grants alone. So if we had an $8 million project and we got $3 million from the state and $3 million from the feds, we would have to cover two. And as I said already, right now, the town has not been on the hook for these contributions. The developers have been willing to make that contribution. The exact figures appear in those Sections 5, 6, and 7. And there's also an arrangement here that... There are two things that are very important. One is that because we were able to supply so much water at such extraordinary flow and good pressure, it was not necessary, under the building code, for the developer to put a water tank on their development, which saved them a lot of money. What we asked them to do in return is, okay, so now we... You pledged that money, but then we didn't have, you didn't have to install that tank. So pledge the money you didn't have to spend to put that tank on your property to help the town of Douglas build its own water tank on North Street that will supply not only your building, but all of that North Street area. So that's what Bob and Eric's been working on, is getting them to agree to enough money so that the entire project cost is covered, either by a grant or by a private contribution. So that's, this is the Scannell portion and is largely driven by the fact that they did not have to put a water tank on their property. So they saved, it was our gain. At the end of the day, though, if we put this water tank up on North Street and we get all the funding is awarded and we build this thing, it's a huge benefit to the town and it's a huge benefit to all the warehouses and other businesses in this part of town because really, frankly, they'll have more water than they ever needed to know what to deal with. And for those large buildings, that's good for sprinkler systems and other things that they're doing. They're not really manufacturing, but they need those sprinklers to run at a certain rate. The other piece that's very important here is that Scannell pledges, and I believe it is Section 8. And I'll read this out loud because I think it's kind of important. Upon the signing and approval of the agreement, the developer agrees it shall be responsible for all designing and engineering costs incurred by the town to date. It is acknowledged that the developer has previously paid $33,900. And as of the effective date, developer still owes to the town the sum of $43,900. Fees shall be paid by developer within 15 days after the effective date payable to the town of Douglas. So we have some outstanding invoices from Stantec that did all the engineering associated with the infrastructure. Scannell is paying for the piece that is relevant to their connections. So that is probably the only time pressure here is we want to pay Stantec for that work. So we can't wait forever to agree to this development agreement. Largely, the rest of this is boilerplate. And if you've seen these agreements before, there's no surprise. There's a process for amendment, process for notice, authority assignment, waiver, choice of law. Choice of law obviously has to be the Commonwealth, and it is. And there you have it. The exhibits just describe in detail the site to be served by the infrastructure. by the infrastructure. So this is very simple compared to the CRG Development Agreement, which had a lot more moving parts to it, because there were land transfers and CRG is buying certain assets for the town to maintain the infrastructure that's been built in that part of town. You know, valve-turning machine and some other things. That's... We didn't ask Scannell for that, because we really didn't. It's just one building. Do you have any questions at this point for me, Mr. Chairman?
No, I do not. Does anybody else have any questions?
No.
Our council and Manaric predominantly worked on this.
We all live it, though, because we get the blow-by-blow.
Thanks for the explanation. Next item up is discuss the town administrator's contract incentive bonus. In your packet, you'll see a memo from Lisa Freeman. It's a section out of his contract for a performance evaluation. "In June of each year, the board will meet with the town administrator to review the town administrator's accomplishments relative to the ascertainment of grant funds and enlargement of revenue opportunities for the town during the course of the fiscal year. The board may award a stipend to the town manager up to $5,000 to be paid in a lump sum in the last pay period of the fiscal year, less taxes and retirement deductions, if the majority of the board finds that the town administrator's accomplishments in this area are worthy of the stipend." I did check to see... You've already seen a couple of the other grants that were... That fell within the fiscal year. It was after July 1st and before June 30th of this year, and that were already voted on, and many other ones that came through. But a couple of large ones, the Water Sewer Infrastructure Grant of $3,313,251, that was awarded to the town. We got the warden letter on July 27, 2022, so it's after July 1st, falls in this fiscal year. And the North Street Readiness Grant was $529,300. That was on October 17 of 2022, which is also within this fiscal year. Does anybody have any questions or not? If we don't have any questions, I would be looking for a motion to approve the $5,000 stipend, or up to $5,000 in that stipend, as written in its contract.
My only question would be, obviously, as you said, up to $5,000. What's to determine? How much? Is there a percentage of what he has achieved for grants, or how would we...
No, it's the last time the contract was written. It was a bonus provision that was written into the contract. It's... I would assume he's going to do the work anyways, but it's kind of an incentive to accomplish the things that have been accomplished. And it's evident that we've accomplished quite a bit over the last few years in town. Last year, we... The same thing was met, and he was awarded the $5,000 stipend in last year's fiscal year. Normally, we should try to talk about it prior to now, because it has to be done before the last pay period of the fiscal year, and we are there. So it's not a time... hashing over it for a long period of time, because we'll miss the...
No, my question was just...
It's just the way that's... That is taken out of his contract. That's how it's...
Okay.
That's how it's ordered.
That's just a section out of it. Okay.
Yep. Anybody for YouTube that you may not be aware of, but any contracts are actually on the town website, under the selection page, so you can freely read through anybody that if I achieved the police chief. Goes on there, too? Yeah. So any contracts that are written with employees are on the website.
And that's a bylaw of the town, and it's one of the ways that Douglas is more transparent than many other communities. You won't always find this. In fact, in many places, you... It's hard to get any of these documents. But the school department also posts there, so everything's...
Anybody care to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll motion to approve the stipend for the town manager of up to $5,000.
I need an actual amount, so $5,000, or do you have a different amount in mind?
No, $5,000.
A motion's made by Maxwell. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Tim Bonan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next thing on there is you're up, Mr. Administrator, for your report.
As people no doubt are noticing, there's been additional change or progress made at the CRG construction site between Northeast Main and Gilboa. Most of the visibility isn't from either of those streets. You would actually need to go on-site. But 20-ton, so that would be 40,000-pound concrete slabs, which form the wall sections, are coming in one at a time on trailer loads. And they're wide loads that require a permit and escort and all the rest of it, as they make their way here from Selkirk, New York. We anticipated that there might be some problems with traffic early on, because they would... You know, there would be kind of tight quarters downtown as they make their way from 395 or from Pike. And we tried to mobilize police. The whole thing was the timing was just too unpredictable. So we were allocating resources to different parts of town, taking them away from other tasks that they could be doing that really wasn't helpful. In the end, the trailers are making it across. We haven't reached our full pace yet, so we might see, you know, a lot more traffic or other traffic difficulties once we reach the pace, which is 20 panels a day. Unfortunately, like everything else in the economy today, the completion of this part of the project is being slowed down by lack of labor. So in this particular case, state troopers, because we're not allowed to run a caravan over the Mass Pike. So the 20 trucks can't come all at once in one great big procession. They have to come one at a time. So if each one of them requires a police cruiser, you can imagine that's 20 trips with a cruiser, taking the cruiser out of service for other things. So that's just not happening. I'm not entirely sure how CRG's schedule is going to be impacted. Just remember, we have a huge vested interest as a town that this project be completed on time, so the assessor can capture it in timely fashion for new growth, and so that the developer can lease it out and get a tenant. So that's where we are. You'll notice the bridge, concrete will be poured. You'll have to sit and cure for a while, and the decking will be put over the top of it. That is going to be the asset that makes traffic less troublesome. We're hoping that almost every truck that comes in and out of this facility will be using that bridge and connecting directly to 146 from just a quick turn. I want to make a special mention and thanks to the leadership at McIntyre Loom for being willing to work with the town and with CRG to move their trailer to a different location so that the road that the employee slash emergency... It's really an emergency access road can be put in without things being in the way. And, you know, there are all these little details that come out in these things, but thanks to Bo and everyone else involved there that was willing to sit down and talk and look that through. The next phase, as I mentioned earlier, that people will notice, before we can close up the road and pave it curb-to-curb, we will need for the sewer pump station to be fully installed and operational. The developer there... Not the developer, the installer is giving us a little bit of a runaround, timing-wise, because they're on another project. We will not allow the road to go through the winter without being paved curb-to-curb. So the installer may be coming to us with a change order, because we're going to force them to use fallable fill and all their trenching. This is... We're not going to have time to wait for the trenches to cure. But that rubble strip that we have out there now, to be blunt, I don't think it's that bad. The three utilities have actually done a fairly decent job of patching their trench, but as we get further along this year, it might deteriorate just a little bit as it gets traveled. So we're hoping to close all that up real quick. The... Excuse me. The grant application for this year for North Street improvements that have been discussed at some length, including a water tank, was submitted this past week. The Mass Works grant application process has been refined and simplified a great deal by the Commonwealth, so it is nowhere near as involved as an EDA grant, and not even as involved as it was last time. We are, you know, knock on wood, hoping that we are once again going to float to the top of the pile here, because we have a pretty compelling story to tell about pine, sand, and gravel in the future of that location. As for the rest of what we've been working on this last couple of weeks, we have completed the dispatcher contract. It will be in front of you as a draft after it's being reviewed by Labor Council. Right now, the union has it, and they're reviewing it. They identified a couple of issues that they want to clarify with Gene and Finance Department, so we're still tweaking the details, but there should be a contract for you to review by your next meeting. You have three employment contracts that we want to get done, preferably before July 1, but really before August 1st would be fine. That's the town administrator, the deputy chief of the fire department, and the lieutenant in the police department are all contractual employees whose contracts are up this year.
The assistant chief.
Assistant chief, sorry.
Yeah.
We use all these terms, so I had to change it by now.
Yep.
Yeah, the assistant chief, the full-time assistant chief. The fire union has asked for us to sit down and contemplate a different shift rotation and structure for the department. And we had our first meeting the other day, and it was an extremely helpful, beneficial meeting. I think there's a lot of common ground. I didn't want to oversell just yet, because it was only a two-hour meeting, but what I think we're going to end up doing is coming up with a model for staffing a fire and ambulance department that is really radically different from what is used by any other municipality. These models were made at a time when, well, frankly, they were driven by the bigger fire departments, who, because of their size, can be much more routinized than we can. We've got to catch as catch can. If we only have two or three people on a shift, you know, two people want to vacay. It's just a completely different setup. But the stodginess around, you know, specific number of hours every day and a specific way of progressing through the year and rotating shifts, and staffing for a constant level versus staffing up for busy times and staffing back down for less busy times, it's all on the table. And I think our thought process is we're going to use, as best we can, a mix of professional full-time staff and part-time or per diem staff, who may or may not qualify for benefits, depending on the number of hours that we schedule them. But to batfill our busiest times with people that may or may not actually be on our benefit rolls, but who are willing to work for us. This may require adjusting their hourly rates of pay upwards to be more competitive with the market, but if we're not paying for that shift to be on for 24, for paying for eight or 10, in the long run, it should save us a little bit of money, but allow us to continue to provide the service. The environment that we're in, the competitive environment for employees of all skill sets, is just crazy. But it's really, really problematic in the world of paramedics, and paramedics that are also cross-trained in fire service are very hard to find. And they have the opportunity to jump around wherever they want based on salary. So that's the world that we're dealing with. The most of the rest of what we're doing, we've met also with the school department today. We're still working diligently towards trying to find a way to close their budget hole that is reflective of the recurring nature of some of the expenses that they've encountered, but also being much more mindful and much more, in my opinion, forthright about what the clauses are. The clauses are not this subsidy or that subsidy provided by the town to support a contract. We actually came in over what we needed for that. There are operational needs in that department. It is a complex department. They have a difficult mission. The town should stand by that mission and be ready to support the school department as it works its way through some of its challenges. But we're going to have to refine what we think we can finance at Fall Town Meeting to a number that we can absorb. And the invitation is to the school committee and school administration to be open-minded about perhaps having to dip deeper into their reserves than they want to, in order to also bear their fair share of what goes on. But I can assure everyone that's been watching this issue that we've been working very diligently. We've had three meetings now. The school administration's providing documents. We're providing documents. We're exchanging information, and, you know, we're making progress. But that's all I want to go through right now, Mr. Chairman. As you know, there are any number of minutia during the day, but I think that covers most of the activity the last couple of weeks.
Thank you. Any session top... Open session topics that weren't reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance?
I got one. Why not? It popped into the town hall today. Prior to that, I checked out the basketball court/pickleball court. Clearly, the pickleball community is taking off into town, and I wholeheartedly support that. But I took an opportunity to look at our electric vehicle chargers. Three out of the four currently look like I could buy electricity, but the fourth one had an error to it. Who's in charge of maintenance on those? Again, refresh my memory.
So that's a building asset, so it's, you know, Adam directly involved in maintaining it, but me as well, because this was a grant-funded activity. I think Lisa is my witness here. If I haven't torn my hair out and given these people a rash, these people being the providers of those charging stations, then I haven't done it to anyone. So where we are with it right now is every time someone attempts to use the charger, it fails. And when we first went through this process, we were under warranty, equipment warranty only, and we paid the labor to come and put new units in, tear the old ones out. And it wasn't more than three or four weeks later, they failed again. I've protested to everyone who listened to me in the Commonwealth, you know, the agency that gave us the grant. I fired the people that recommended this vendor. But I'm reluctant to fire the vendor completely and tell them to get their useless garbage out of here, because then we've advertised that we have these stations, and it would be at our expense.
We have signs up.
If we rip and replace, it would be at our expense, and I don't think the granting agency is going to let us get away with not having them unless we put them in. So where we stand right now is, we hired an electrician, an electrician that we do a lot of work with, smaller jobs around the town, to go out, make the units safe, which they have done, and to determine if there's anything from the charging station to the building and inside the building that's failing. In other words, are we, with our sketchy electricity in this building, causing those stations to fail? And so far, the electrician is absolutely adamant that that is not the case. So today, we had an exchange with EV Connect about their software, whether or not their software is being triggered properly, so that when someone... The way you initiate a charging session is you're supposed to have the app... The way you initiate a charging session is you're supposed to have the app on your phone. You enter your login information, and you're on the app. You identify, almost like you would at the gas station, what pump, what charger you're at, and you plug in, and it's supposed to initiate a session and then charge you when it's done. We haven't set any fees for charging people, because we haven't been able to guarantee the charger would work. So you can imagine, that would have been a headache if we were charging people and they weren't actually getting any electricity. So we don't have that problem yet. But I'm anxious to have Morissette and the software provider actually here on-site, and that's what's going to happen, a tech from EV Connect is going to come out and meet with us and see what the issue is. But it's very frustrating, because, and believe me, it's not just Douglas. This is happening in a fair number of communities. I don't want to wax cynical, but, you know, a lot of money was floating around. It was sort of a vogue, in vogue thing to do, get this put in. All the expenses were paid by state grant. A small amount came from Douglas Town Meeting. I think we had to kick in $6,000 out of a $56,000 project. And everybody's experience is almost universally the same. They don't work when you need them to. People don't know they're there. There's just an ongoing set of issues around it, but it has an unusually large share of mind.
Yeah. It's interesting, we worked on that today, because I just stumbled across it. I hadn't actually seen that interface.
Yeah.
That's all.
Before we close our regular session and move into executive session, on the contract negotiations, that's pretty straightforward. The interest in real property, have you heard back from all the boards and committees? That would be...
Recreation was the only board that hasn't met regarding it yet. They're meeting this month, so I'm waiting to hear back from Ryan on what that date will be.
Yeah. With that information, I would suggest that we may want to pass over that until next meeting, and the interest in real property off executive session, and just enter into executive session for the contract negotiations. Anybody have any issues with that?
Nope. That's fine.
Tim, would you do the honors, please?
I will. Make a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of the Town Administrator's contract negotiation, and to leave executive session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
I second that.
Second. Motion's been made, and seconded. Any further discussion? I guess we move into executive session.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Oshman, aye.
Smith, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bonan, aye.